Let's open up the ordinance committee meeting. And we have an ordinance accepting two street dedications to the city. And the city attorney will inform us.
Thank you. This issue first came to me via a letter that's in the packet on page six from the Homeowners Association and legendary subdivision. And also on page eight of your packet, there's a map with two yellow circles, and I call those the legendary dead ends. There are two streets that literally dead end with no cul-de-sac, no turnaround or anything. The reason that happened is when this subdivision was platted years ago, it was anticipated that another phase was going to go into the north, so this was the way it was platted. Fast forward 13, 14 years, what's happened is that garbage trucks, fire trucks, when they get to the end of these streets, they have no, or school buses, they have no way to turn around. So the homeowner, the head of the homeowners association reached out, reached out to the city. Chief Irwin and I, along with representatives from the developer, actually went out and looked at this. And you can actually see where trucks have been driving over the curb, which is going to damage the curb. So the developer was approached about trying to come up with a solution that would solve this situation. And what they came up with is pages four and five are a rough drawing, and I actually have a precise legal description now for each of these. Basically, they're a 20 by 20-foot turnaround on these two lots, on each of these two dead-end streets that would allow, that the developer is willing to dedicate these 20 by 20 squares to the city, and that's what this ordinance would do. The fire department has indicated this is sufficient for them to be able to turn a fire truck around should they need to. And before the city can accept the dedication of land, it requires us to pass it by ordinance. We've actually gone through and estimated what the cost would be to construct these. The two of these together, it's estimated to cost less than $9,000 for the city to install these.
For both of them?
For both of them.
Oh, so the developers want us to put the road in, the circle in?
Well, we'd put the curb gutter in the street in, but he's dedicating the land.
Correct. They're dedicating the two, the 20 by 20-foot squares on each of these two lots, which is right in the middle of those two yellow circles, that would allow a fire truck, a school bus, a garbage truck to turn around without having to drive over the curb. Because whenever we were out there, it was very obvious that they were driving over the curb, they were rutting the lot that was vacant, driving over it. And it's eventually going to tear the curb up. And I appreciate, Roush Coleman is actually the developer. They met us out there. They had three, four people out there with us, along with the fire chief and the head of the homeowners association who's here as well. This is, I appreciate the fact that they're willing to help resolve the situation to the satisfaction of everyone. So before we can do this, it would take the city accepting the dedication of those two 20 by 20-foot pieces of property that are coming off these two lots, Lot 95 and Lot 78.
Forgive me if I missed this, but the reason they didn't do the subdivision to the north is because 612 came through, I guess?
No, I think what happened was the previous developer, the developer that has this now is not the developer that initially did this subdivision. They came in after the fact. And I think the previous developer had intended on another phase to the north, so that's why when this was platted, it was platted with two dead ends, which isn't very helpful for the people who live on those dead ends.
So how do we keep this from happening in the future?
You mean plating it like this? I don't know of another situation where this has happened.
I can tell you that basically, we don't allow that to happen anymore. They have to put a cul-de-sac or some turnaround in, even if they're planning a phase two.
To start with.
Yep. Because we run into several of these issues throughout the city, so we just...
So in that case, we do have some areas of the city where there's a turn, but you can see at one time it was a cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Yeah.
And the alternative, if we don't do this, the only other alternative to remedying this situation would be to construct a cul-de-sac on the property to the north, which is owned by a private individual, and we would have to condemn that. And that would be probably very costly for the city when Roush Coleman is willing to dedicate property sufficient for a fire truck to turn around in, which is our main concern. And it assists the property owners as well with the garbage trucks turning around.
I make a motion to forward the ordinance to council with the recommendation for approval.
I have a question. So are there are other areas like this throughout Springdale? And are we going to have to do this in those areas?
I've been here 20, 23 years, and this is the first time I've ever run across this exact situation. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but it's the first time that I've ever had this brought to our attention.
What I was referencing is that there are places where you can tell it used to be a cul-de-sac, and it's been extended one direction.
Right.
So they built a cul-de-sac, which I wish would have happened here.
Right.
So there are other places that they've built streets off of cul-de-sacs before.
Well, I've seen them throughout town. I can think of one on, that all those tree streets off Johnson Road. There's one on that first...
St. Morham or Dogwood?
Yeah, one of those. There's one, you know, they're, most of them are short. I think there might be one on White Road, too, or maybe it used to be. But they're not very many, and most of them are very short. But I just hope, we don't want that to happen in the future. It sounds like we're watching for that now.
Right. And maybe check with the school busing system, or police or fire, and just to make sure that...
The fire department would be in on any of these situations going forward? I mean, and if, I guess a bus could turn around if a fire truck can, right?
We were out there, actually a school bus, if I remember, came by, and we were actually out there looking at this. The school bus actually, actually came around, and so...
So Chief Irwin, there's no other places in the city that you can think of that have this situation where you guys can't maneuver your vehicles?
I'm not going to say that there's not, but that hasn't been brought to our attention. But yeah, the 20 feet will work for us. It's not ideal. I know that Ernest and I talked about it, but it's way better than what we currently have.
Right, okay.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
What was the cost on this again?
Nine thousand.
Per or total?
Both.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion to second to pass this forward to the council for the recommendation for approval. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, this will be passed on to the council for recommendation for approval, the next council meeting. Is there anything else to come before the ordinance committee?
I was just going to let him know that that'll be next Tuesday at 6:00, Mr. McClain.
Okay, the ordinance committee is adjourned.
All right, I'll open. Finance committee, first item on finance agenda is the resolution for the, to authorize the execution of a construction contract for Spring Creek Trail. Brad, you going to address that?
Yes. We had a bid opening for the Spring Creek Trail. It came in, if I remember right, $360,000 under the engineer's estimate. All of the bids came in under what was estimated, so we recommend the low bidder.
Where are these funds coming from?
They're in the Public Works budget. All the trails money passes through Public Works, and there's several million dollars that are in-line items in that budget.
Where is the stretch at?
It runs from the trailhead at Thunder Chicken, the mountain bike park, west to the Game and Fish property, and across, partway across the Game and Fish Nature Center.
To meet up with their trail?
Yeah.
This will basically connect Game and Fish to the Greenway.
So Mike, remember, for the last time of years, Mayor, we've set aside...
This is 2012, probably 2013.
Funding for the trails in the Public Works budget.
Because what started us doing that was the half-cent sales tax that passed back in '12.
How much is in that budget?
Public Works budget?
How much is in the fund, I guess, or whatever it is?
I'm not sure. It's in the Public Works budget, and I don't know how Laura tracks it separately from turn back.
A lot of it is carried over because it was committed, and we're waiting. It's usually, a lot of it is used to match grants and the trail.
There's no grant on this?
Yes. We're funding the trail from Thunder Chicken to 40th Street, and the 40th Street across Game and Fish is Walton Family Foundation and a tap grant.
And does it basically end at the Game and Fish property?
Yes. Yes.
The west end of it, and then eventually it'll carry on west.
Has this company built trails for us in the past? You know, has this company built trails for us in the past?
Not for us, but they've built other trails in northwest Arkansas, is my understanding.
I move the resolution be forwarded with recommendation for approval.
Back and back.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to forward this resolution to council with recommendation for approval. Is any further discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Second item was going to be a report, a financial report.
I'm going to propose a microphone extension in the next building. You have a few documents there in front of you. This is just a brief summary with the financial update. As you'll remember, I think we've already reported that last month, we saw about a 25% increase in sales tax. If you add imethylhydates, we're looking more at 30% increase. We budgeted for about a 6%, so we were 20% over what we had projected for that month. And so our sales tax is really strong at this point for the first quarter. If you look at the first page, you're going to see the general fund. We have a balance of $9,423,246. You can see where in the last three months, January, February, and March, that has impacted that total dollar amount from 7.9 million to 9.4. So that's your general fund balance. But do keep in mind, on the second page, we still do have some capital, money that was designated to go to capital projects that we can't just throw into the general fund because it had already been designated. So on top of the 9.4 million, you also see on the bottom right-hand corner, there is $2.67 million that is available for capital projects as well. So when you combine those two numbers, the city has a little over $12.1 million to use at its discretion. Laura would request that you not spend it, but we do have over $12 million available. Then on the third sheet, you're going to see our revenue and expense summary. In the middle of the page, you'll see the cumulative budget year-to-date and the difference. At the bottom, in the right corner of the middle section, you'll see a little over $1 million. That's going to basically tell you how we are this year. Once you factor in all our revenues and all of our expenses, we're $1 million to the good for the year, so for the first quarter. And we typically get a lot of our sales tax and turn back money later on in the year, so we'll probably see that increase as time goes on. And some of our salary savings, we're going to start seeing those jobs that were held off for a few months, we'll start seeing those kicking as well, but we should be in really good, good shape. Is there any questions about the report?
Well, is that number reflected on the first page, then? On these January, February, and March?
They're going to be different because in the revenue...
Different?
They're going to be different. In the revenue expense report, you're going to have, that's a total snapshot of even restricted funds. The first two pages are unrestricted. So you're going to have Act 833 in this revenue expense report that's not reflected on unrestricted funds. So the numbers are going to look different in those. In fact, moving forward, we could actually add that as a category on those other pages if you'd like.
Actually, this 1.1 is reflected in the 11 million surplus we've got right now.
Well, there's restricted funds that aren't going to show up on that first page. Those are completely unrestricted.
I understand.
Yeah. Yeah, the first page is unrestricted and unreserved, so you're going to have things like Act 833 and 911 money that are expenses that you'll see on this page that are not going to be in the unrestricted. So they are going to have a different total there. But the overall summary is in the revenue expense report that shows we're over $1 million to the good this year.
It's good news.
It's very good news, especially when you have sales tax revenue up almost 30%. That's excellent news. And I'll tell you this as well, I just, I had some meetings with Cruisin' Associates last week to discuss our bonds, and we are actually 10 years ahead of schedule to pay off our 2018 bond that we took to the voters, and I don't think anybody anticipated seeing that happen. So we've done really well. Our tax revenue just keeps increasing, and it just keeps paying off on the back end of that bond. So I think we've done the voters well with that.
What are they projecting new bond rates?
I'm sorry?
What are they projecting new bond rates to be at? Because obviously, they're talking about us being ahead, they're talking about prospective new bond issues, so what kind of rates were they talking about?
Well, not necessarily. Part of the discussion is, what do we do with the 2012 bond moving forward? There may be some opportunities there. But new bond rates, as you know, interest rates are about to go up, and we don't, we have no way of telling what they're going to do exactly, but we're expecting that they're probably going to be in the 3% range years down the road when we do a new bond.
Could we put that in writing and make sure it's in the newspaper?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much. Nothing else, we'll close the finance committee.
Colby, if you'll go ahead and stay there. I'm going to go ahead and open the personnel committee. Colby will be presenting a resolution.
You have in front of you a resolution authorizing the creation of a new position and replacing an existing position. As many of you know, Rose Lawrence is going to be retiring. She's served the city well for over 20 years and done a fantastic job. We felt like this may be an opportunity for us to change the job description that she serves under. We wrote that job description in 2012, so almost nine years ago. And one of the recommendations I made to the mayor is that we look at reworking that, reconfiguring that job, putting more responsibility on the job, and higher expectations. As the city continues to grow, we're a city of probably 83,000, 84,000, 85,000 people, we'll find that number out soon, but I think expectations rise on the different job positions that we have. And this is a very important position in our city. So Gina and I worked together on this job description. The one you see that is a grade 18, it says City of Springdale, non-civil servant, Mayor's Administrative Assistant. We did change some of the wording on this. It didn't change the grade very much. We just tried to update it, but we realized there's some things lacking in there that we would like to see. So we wrote a complete new job description. Gina graded it, rated it, and it came out to a 23. So what we're asking the council to consider is replacing the old position with the administrative assistant with the executive assistant to the mayor position. The resolution does state that the job rated at an 18 has a pay scale of $34,888 all the way up to $51,310. And this new position grades out at a 23, and it starts at $44,523. When I made this recommendation, I started researching what this position would make in the private sector. There were seven jobs that started out in the 40 to $45,000 range within a 25-mile radius here of similar job descriptions. Then you start at 45 on up to 60-plus, and there's over 13 that are in that pay scale. So we felt like the grade 23 was commensurate to all the requirements that we were putting on this position. I've provided you with the old job description and the new job description, and I've got quite a few things highlighted here that are different. We know that the council's expectations are high for that position, and we feel like in order to receive the resumes and the right person for that job, we're going to have to upgrade it. Basically, if we start out at an 18, we're talking about someone making $16.77 an hour. This is a difficult job market right now. Talked to some restaurant owners and other small business owners, and it is hard, it is hard to fill jobs, and the pay is getting more and more competitive every single day. If we go to the grade 23, which we believe that's justified, it raises that to $21.40 an hour.
And that's starting pay?
That is starting pay.
The bottom end?
Correct. So in the step 18, Rose has been maxed out at this position. She makes the top of the position, which is $51,310. Technically, we could keep the job description the same without raising expectations and start someone with some experience higher to that number, but they're going to be topped out within a year or two, probably. And that's not attractive when you're trying to hire someone to fill a new position, to let them know you're going to be topped out here in three or four years. So what we'd like to do is start them out at a 23 towards the entry level position.
What is your title again?
My title is...
Chief Executive in cooking, bottle washer, and anything else that needs to be done.
That's pretty accurate, actually.
Yeah.
Chief of Staff.
Staff.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, thinking back, you know, when we went through the whole process, the thinking was that when Wyman retires, that you would kind of step into that position.
That's what will still happen. Or Wyman's position will be eliminated then.
So, okay, that's what, that was my question.
In a nutshell, what are the additional responsibilities of this position versus the old one?
We put some new requirements for this job. I've highlighted them all here on my documents. But we upgraded things to discuss, for example, responsible for providing a wide array of complex, diverse, confidential administrative and support services to the mayor in a highly sensitive, demanding, and rapidly changing environment. The incumbent's work is characterized by involvement with broad, citywide issues and interactions with other elected officials, constituents, representatives, and it discusses complex and sensitive matters. There is a supervisory role associated with this that's not on the other position. We would like for this job to supervise the other position that's in the admin offices there, which is currently filled by Beth Parnell. So there would be a new supervisory role for this individual as well. There's other things with skill and proficiency that we felt were a necessity for this job that weren't in the old one. Expert level written and verbal communication skills. It goes into different programs that we really feel like we need somebody who has a good understanding of all those programs to be able to fulfill that job.
I guess that includes dog walking, picking up, cleaning, dropping off, cleaning, et cetera?
If you'd like to add that to the official description, I will gladly add that in there.
Get that clarified. I know the mayor has a lot of needs.
It'll make that go up.
Yeah. Grade 24 for that.
I wonder if anyone would have, how anyone would feel about tabling to the next committee meeting, just to give everybody time to look at these job descriptions and think about it, talk about it, whatever. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, given that we just got these descriptions and the comparisons.
Let me ask you, before you go too far down that road, we need to get this advertised.
Speaking of saving.
We've got, we've got Rose retiring in...
June, right?
Yeah, middle of June. And I was hoping, of course, I realize some of you didn't get it Friday when it went out, but hoping that you'd had enough opportunity to look this over. This is going to be a cost savings, probably, depending on who we hire. This will be a cost savings for probably at least three to five, maybe six years.
What about forwarding without any recommendation?
That would be better if we can deal with it next Tuesday. I just, every time we back it up a couple of weeks, then we've got, that's, that closes that window more that we've got time to get somebody interviewed, hired, because we've got to run it for a certain number of days, and hire Rose, you know, get time with Rose.
Yeah, and as I said, June, I realize that's right around the corner, so...
I will say this, and I'm not at liberty to divulge any information, but Rose, she is retiring in June, but she's available a little less than what we had anticipated right now, and I can't go into why, but we need to get somebody trained. We hope somebody will walk into this position that has experience. However, anybody that we hire in this job is going to have to understand some things that Rose has been able to do for so many years. So we feel like time is a little more of the essence than we did even two weeks ago. And Rose is at the top of the, she's at the highest step in that grade, and so this person would make less than what she's making. As the mayor was alluding to, we will have a few years of cost savings in this job. And we felt like with, as well as we're doing as a city, and as important of a role as that is, that this would be a great time for us to pursue this.
So if we forward this on, what are y'all anticipating on having a left seat, right seat transition from Rose to the new person? What timeframe are y'all looking, you want to have for that?
She is retiring the second week of, or June 18th, I believe, is the date that she gave to us. And so, I mean, the sooner we can get someone in, the better we are. And we have received applications, but we really feel like we need to upgrade this job in order to get the right person in here.
Do you think in three weeks, four weeks would get that person to where they needed to be, just depending on the caliber of that individual?
I think so. Maybe, maybe a little longer than that, I would think.
Well, and it's going to be like a lot of our jobs, Brian, you're going to learn something. You're going to keep learning, so, yeah.
Well, you're going to learn through a fire hose on this one.
Yeah. And some of this stuff is not going to settle down real well until we get into our other building, as far as knowing what other, you know, are we going to, are we, are we going to have someone downstairs to direct people to, I mean, we've thought through a lot of that, but we're going to be in a pretty much of a transition for another year, year to 18 months, until we're all into the new building. And, but that transition, that, I mean, Rose, Rose has, we have a deadline on that one. So we thought that it would be helpful to have a, to upgrade the position, get folks with a broader skill set in there that can help, certainly help me and help our administration, but help the next person behind us, too, if they, you know, if they hang, you never, you never have any guarantees about how long somebody's going to work, but we'd like to, and really, I'm not trying to push this, except for the fact that Rose is, you know, we know that date. And if you're, you know, I'd ask that at a minimum, we'd could forward it without a recommendation. But that's up to y'all. We'll, hey, we'll deal with it, whatever happens, so. How soon do you want to start saving money?
I'm happy to do that, Mayor said. That's an unfair question. We have to think about that for a while.
Colby, does this, the new graded job, it requires a four-year college degree? It says equivalent to a four-year college degree?
Yes.
That's a requirement?
Equivalent.
Where that wasn't before. Colby, does this, the new graded job, it requires a four-year college degree? Does equivalent to a four-year college degree?
Yes.
That's a requirement?
Equivalent.
Where that wasn't before?
Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of skill and knowledge requirements that have not been previously required for that job position. And with the education experience, we also stated in there a broad knowledge of such fields such as journalism, public administration, accounting, marketing, business administration, finance, et cetera. We don't expect them to be an expert in all of those fields, but we really need someone in that job that has some knowledge of all of those things. That's, I think that's very important.
So is that why you took out the certificate, license registrations, must complete an administrative assistant program or certification?
Yeah, that's too broad. It could be very general. We, we have specific things we want people, whoever fills that job, to know about.
Okay. And you said you had applicants? Have we posted the, this graded?
Not until it's approved. Not the 23?
The 18?
18 was posted.
So I mean, how are you getting applicants if we haven't posted? So this is, the 18 has been posted?
18 has been posted, and we had 56 applications recently, as of last week. I haven't checked today, but we still feel like we really need to upgrade this.
So there's 56 applicants for 18. If we amend it to 23, there's a good chance a good deal of them don't qualify for the 23, right?
Of what now?
If we amend it to the 23, there's a good deal that, or there's a, there's a chance that a good deal of the 18 applicants don't qualify for the 23.
They would have to probably substantiate that they fulfill the other requirements. And I'll say this, I, I had recommendations for this job. I requested people to please apply. I can't say definitively that the pay was the reason they didn't, but they did not turn in a resume. People who had had experience working in political offices on different levels above local government. And like I said, I can't say definitively it was the pay, but if I had to guess, I would say it was.
And I'll state, I have nothing against the idea of this. I just wanna compare and review. And I think the mix-up that appeared to happen on Friday and Saturday, as far as not getting this may have contributed to that, but I move that, moves the council without any recommendation.
Second.
So I had a question. We used to have, what was this position? It was communications or public relations, or what was that?
Right. And that's, that's not been filled, and it won't be filled. It won't be filled unless, unless we bring it up at budget time, but I don't expect to.
Well, is, would this role?
And would, would help fill that role in the meantime. This, this person, when they, when they come in, they're gonna have, they're gonna be tag-teaming with Colby and the other people.
They'd have some of those same skills, probably, it sounds like.
Right. The abilities to communicate and...
This, this'll help us to not have to fill that role between the mayor and I in this position.
What's the name of that position, do you remember?
Public relations.
Public relations, yeah.
Public relations, yeah.
Yeah, but that was a 60-something thousand dollar, your job, 68, I believe.
So, I mean, if it's similar, it sounds like...
It was 68 most recently, but before it was 68, it was...
70.
Sounds like it might be a similar position, but with even more responsibility.
So do we have any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes?
Thank you.
With that, I'll open up Parks and Rec. We have one resolution before us tonight. It's a, a resolution authorizing the execution of a change order for the construction contract for Rabbit's Foot Lodge, and I'll turn it over to Wyman.
They've started renovation of the Rabbit Foot Lodge, and part of the boards, they pulled off and revealed some additional boards that they need to replace before they can cover them back up. The change order's not very much, but $2,809. When we adopted, when we approved the contract, I didn't put the paragraph on there that give the mayor the authority to sign change orders. I added it to this one.
Yeah, as long as it's in, within contingency, I, on the other projects, I've been able to approve change orders up to 10%. And so we're adding that to this, too, so we don't, if we have other change orders, we wouldn't necessarily have to come back to the council as long as they're within that contingency.
I move the resolution be forwarded to council with the recommendation of approval.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll move it forward.
All right. Thank you.